The Bristol, Virginia City Council. Today is Tuesday, July 9, 2024, and at this time we'll have a moment of silent prayer. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to see a large crowd out tonight, so thank you all for joining us for this meeting on this beautiful sunny day. We ordered this weather. It's just a tad bit warm, but it's still beautiful weather. I just have a couple of announcements I would like to make. First, I was really excited to be part of the Eggs Up Grill ribbon cutting today. If you haven't been out to that restaurant yet, it's out there by Kroger and at Shopping Plaza, so please go out and try Eggs Up Grill. The food is delicious, and it's one of my favorite places, and I was really excited to see Bristol get one. Secondly, I would just like to recognize Ms. Tamara S. Bradlin and our finance office. We have, the city of Bristol has been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and this certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And I'll just have to say, thank you, Ms. Bradlin, congratulations, and this is a huge award, and we're so proud of you and so proud that you're on our team and that our financial reporting is getting this type of recognition. They're few and far between throughout the state, so thank you and congratulations. And I'll open the floor for any other comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have one thing. I would just like to officially congratulate Randy White on his reappointment as a member of the school board. You know, Mr. White, I believe, was part of the group of our very first elected school board when it became an office that was voted on in election, and I think he was one of the first members elected. Just recently retired, and, you know, he had the opportunity to come back and, you know, fill Breann Hubbard's shoes for a few months, and we're very grateful for him. I know at one point, I don't know if it's still the case, but I know at one point that all five members of the city council and the other four members of the school board, except him, had all been in his class at some point. So, you know, he's the power behind the throne, I guess. So, we're very glad that he's back involved with the school system and back involved with the city for a little while, and wish him the best of luck.
Just a quick comment about the Fourth of July parade. I feel like we say this a lot whenever we have a big event, just, I'm always amazed at how quickly after the event or after the parade downtown is turned around again, and the streets are clean and open. It's almost like it didn't even happen, so just a big thank you to everyone who was downtown as far as our police officers, our firefighters, everyone with the public works department. They always do a great job setting everything up and then cleaning everything up afterwards.
There we go. Sorry, new mic. Got just a couple of things I want to mention real quick. Last, this past Saturday was the last game for the Bristol Rhythm for their inaugural season. They had a phenomenal first season. The team itself and the folks behind the team did a great job of building the team up this year, really engaging the communities throughout our region. They went to youth soccer leagues, they went to high school soccer leagues, they really got folks engaged with the team. And so they had a great turnout, they had a great showing that last game, they won three to zero, so that was a great way to kind of ride into the sunset for the year. So I'm looking forward to next year and even bigger and better things there. So congrats to the Bristol Rhythm. Secondly, I do want to thank those that participated in the mini golf with the first responder we had two weeks ago. Fire Department, Police Department, Sheriff's Office, the Red Cross, all showed up to show off their vehicles, show off their team to the kids that came out to play mini golf with the first responder. So it was a great turnout. We had a ton of Sunset slush given out. I think we gave out 147 slushes, so that's quite a few to beat the heat there, so that was good. And then thirdly, on Friday, I got a chance to do a ride along with one of our police officers for a couple hours, just to see kind of what they do, what they put up with, might be a good way to phrase that. So I appreciate Officer Glover letting me tag along for a bit, got to see a few things, got to see some processes that they have to go through. Our folks are the utmost professionals, they do a fantastic job, and just seeing them in action was a great experience. So if you see a police officer, see a first responder, please give them your thanks. They do a great job and put their lives on the line for us, so thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'll just add, too, on the first responder event, I know that you were instrumental in putting that together, so thank you to our Vice Mayor for organizing that. It was a tremendous event and great turnout. And then also thank you to all of the councils up here for participating in the parade and the July 4th event. It was great to be out and handing out candy and just all working together on that. So it was a great event, so thank you all. Next, city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a few comments. First, I want to thank staff for everything they did over the Independence Day holiday weekend to make sure that everyone was safe and had a great time. That goes to our police, fire, and public works department. They all worked all weekend to make sure that everything in Bristol ran smoothly, and I appreciate everything they've done. Also appreciate everyone who came out and celebrated Independence Day holiday here in downtown Bristol. It was a great success, and hopefully we'll continue those events and they'll keep getting better every year. Next, I'd like to congratulate the Bristol Rhythm on their first season. We're hoping that they will return next year for another season at Gene Malcolm Stadium. By all accounts, it's been a successful year and looking forward to hosting more soccer events here in Bristol. Next week, we'll have a called council meeting on Tuesday, July 16 at 12:30 in the afternoon. We will not have a regular meeting on July 23. Battle of the Badges Blood Drive is August 2, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. Give blood and support to our fire department or our police department on that event on August 2, 2024. And finally, and definitely not least, everyone needs to go check out the New Marketplace Food Hall in the Hard Rock Hotel and Casino. It opened today. They have, it's a food center that offers a diverse range of menu items and also sells some local products, so if you haven't, take a moment and go out to Hard Rock and check out the New Marketplace.
All right, thank you, and I will second that. I got to try several of the items already, and it was delicious, so make sure you go out there and try it. And the good thing about the marketplace piece of it is it is open to all ages. You don't have to be 21 like you do in the casinos, so if you want to go out with the family and grab a pizza, grab food, you can do that because children are allowed in that area. Next, I'm looking for an adoption of the agenda.
I move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Tanil, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
First item on the regular agenda, approval of Highlands Community Services for year 25 performance contract. Staff report by Randy, and then I believe also Rebecca Holmes is here with Highlands Community Services.
Mayor and council, this is an annual approval of a performance contract between Highlands Community Services and the city of Bristol. Ms. Holmes is here to answer any questions that you all may have in regards to the agreement. As I said before, we approve this agreement on an annual basis. Highlands Community Services does a great job supporting their people here in the Bristol region and other parts of the locality as well, so I look forward to the approval of this agreement.
Good evening. I trust that the 149 pages you received has been thoroughly combed through, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I do want to say thank you. Thank you to all that you do for our community. It is super important, and we appreciate it. And I know that with all the services you all provide, there could have been 400 pages, and so, but thank you for all that you do. We greatly appreciate it.
It's our pleasure.
I would just like to echo that as well. Thank you, Dr. Holmes, for being here. I appreciate the work you all do. You all, you see the needs in our community, and you find ways to address it. You're creative, you jump in, you're not afraid to do the work, so thank you for what you do. Excited to keep working with you.
Thank you.
All right, with no questions, we're looking for a council motion and second.
I move the approval of the service contract. Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Tanil, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Holmes, for being here tonight. Thank you. All right, number two on the list, special use permit, SU01-2024, multifamily residential in B3 district, Albert Lane, and we're looking for a staff report from Jay Dietrich.
Mayor, there we go, members of council. The staff has received a special use permit request for property on Albert Lane. That address is probably going to update, that 245 has been torn down, so, but that was the most available, so I figured I'd go ahead and use that. The proposed use is multifamily residential in a B3 zoning district, of which a special use permit is required. The property is currently vacant. Michael and Ashley Cooper are the property owners and the developers. They are in the process right now of finishing 29 townhouse apartment units across the street on Bristol View Drive. Right now, they have 20 available, 18 of them have been rented, and they have about nine more, which I think are going to be finished by the beginning of August. This request, there is a possibility there might be a seventh unit as opposed to just the sixth. That is well within the density requirements that is permitted in this request. As you can see, the property is zone B3. Across the street is the R3, and the townhouse apartments are under construction right now. And this is just kind of a view of what the ones up there now look like, and the new ones will be similar, almost identical, except they may have garages, just depending on how the property is and how the final design goes. So like I said, the request, the Coopers have submitted this application for a special use permit for family, multifamily residential in a B3 zoning district. City code section 50-32 lists the permitted uses for this zoning district, and multifamily is only allowed with a special use permit. Density and yard requirements for a permit allowing multifamily in a B3 would be in accordance with R3 requirements. There's approximately half an acre here, so six or seven are going to fall within that density range. The special use permit allows for a specific use to occur without changing the zoning district. The property is currently vacant. The Planning Commission recommended this for a joint public hearing at their May 20 meeting. The joint public hearing with the city council was held at the June 25 city council meeting. The Planning Commission voted to recommend this request to the city council for approval at their June 26 called meeting. The public hearing was advertised in accordance with state code in the Bristol Herald Courier on June 11 and June 18, and notices were sent to adjoining property owners on June 18. I have not heard any comments one way or the other from the adjoining property owners, and as you know, at the public hearing two weeks ago, there were no comments. I just want to run through one last time the eight different things that we need to give consideration for for this special use permit. Community Development Office sends the request to members of staff so that they can answer as they see fit for their area of expertise. First of all, was the sufficiency of streets and public ways to accommodate increased traffic flow, the considered opinion of the city engineer and any certified traffic engineer being given particular weight by the council. Jake Chandler, our Director of Public Works, and Uma Pokiri, civil engineer, made comments that the current number of apartments would likely increase the average daily traffic to over 400 vehicles per day, which could cause Bristol View Drive to require future widening. The existing 29 apartments were permitted by right, and the developer was not required to do any off-site street improvements. While the addition of six more apartments will increase the ADT, to require additional off-site work would be difficult to justify for another six or seven apartment units. So this is a project which will be added to the CIP for future improvements. Number two, the sufficiency of electrical sewer and water services for the proposed project, the considered opinion of the General Manager of the Utility Board given particular weight by the council. No comments were provided by BVU, but GIS does show water and sewer available at the site. Sufficiency of fire, police, garbage, and other services of the city to meet the needs of the proposed project. Jake Chandler, our Director of Public Works, commented that a solid waste dumpster would be preferred, given the narrow roadway surface and the fact that 29 rollout carts will be placed on the opposite side of Bristol View Drive. This is something that will be decided upon final on the site plan process. The adequacy of protection to adjoining properties and the air, water, the Commonwealth of noise, odor, pollution, and health hazards. We did not receive any comments from the State Health Department, but these are questions that do get addressed during the site plan process, what with erosion, sediment control, and stormwater quality and quantity. The impact of the proposed property upon the property values of contiguous property owners, as evidenced by the testimony or written opinion of the city's Economic Development Committee Director. Matt Chapman, our Economic Development Specialist, commented that with the housing need in our community and the projects the applicant is currently completing, this project should only continue to have a positive impact on the property values of the area. I did not have comments for any of the other three things that we look at. It does not involve a parking garage, so of course the final one is not even applicable. So as I said before, the Planning Commission recommended the request for approval at their June 26 called meeting. What with the housing issues that Bristol, Virginia faces, I believe that projects like these need to be continued to be pushed forward, whether they are zone residential or they do have to go through the special use permit process. So staff recommends that city council approve the special use request of residential in a B3 district for the property known as 245 Albert Lane by resolution.
All right, thank you, Jay. And before we get into a discussion, we're looking for a council motion and second.
I move for approval of the special use permit as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council discussion. I'll just say I'm excited that the Coopers want to invest in this, and are they here tonight? Yeah, okay, yeah. Thank you for considering this investment. We do need housing desperately in our city, and I think it fits nicely with the area that you're going in, because there's already the same type of housing there, and so they look very nice by the pictures I'm seeing here and then the ones I've seen out there. So I'm excited for that, and we just appreciate your investment into the city. It's going to be a great addition.
And just to echo that, I think I mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting, you know, they're building something that I think we have a need for in the city, which is some nice residential. We do have a need for that, and anytime someone comes in the door, whether you call them a builder, a contractor, a developer, you know, and they're going to spend, you know, millions of dollars on a project, you know, they have the choice, they could go to any locality. So the fact that they're choosing Bristol, Virginia, I just want to say, you know, we appreciate them, and hopefully they've had a good experience working with all of us, and we hope you continue to do projects in Bristol, Virginia.
Yeah, I'll say very quickly, this is great. I mean, obviously, I've said for a long time that Bristol needs more density as far as new housing developments. We need new housing developments in general, but we also need more dense developments. I think this is great. You know, we have a goal to grow our population, to be a growing city, and I think that people are starting to look, obviously, they've been looking at East Tennessee, they're starting to look at Southwest Virginia for places to relocate, and it's important that we have these type of options open to people, you know, for brand-new, very nice housing. I drove out there a couple weeks ago and looked at what's going on currently, and it's great. So we appreciate your all's investment.
Having been on the Planning Commission for a period of time, I like discussing things like, not just is it a good idea to do this, but is it a good idea to do it there? That's what zoning is all about, and that's what the discussion this evening is actually about, whether to allow a use that's not specifically allowed in that zone to be done in that zone. Well, the zone is B3, which is for business. It's not intended for residential, but it's allowed, it allows residential with the special use permit that we're discussing this evening. Well, what's the purpose of then the B3 zone there? It's basically a buffer between the manufacturing area right behind it and the residential across the street. Well, doing this as multifamily rather than single-family fills that buffer purpose perfectly as well. You said that, if I remember correctly, you said that there was currently a single-family residence there that's been torn down.
Correct, that's what was there. There are also some mobile homes in that area as well, so.
Which means this is changing it from single-family use to multifamily use, which actually improves the buffer use of the property, right? Wouldn't you say that?
Yes, it does.
So in my opinion, this is the perfect use of that zone. It's exactly what it was intended for. It may not fit the wording of the B3 zone, but that's what that particular location is designed for and why it was on B3 in the first place. Have another question as well. You said that Bristol View may need future improvements due to the increased traffic. What about Wagner Road? Because it's also going to see increased traffic.
We can take a look at Wagner Road, and we know Bristol View's going to need some improvements in the future.
They're not going to be on Bristol View for very long when they get out of these apartments. They're going to be on Wagner pretty quickly.
And that might be something we need to look at, and I'll get our civil engineer that specializes in transportation issues to look at.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Well, I believe Wagner Road already handles a lot of traffic, so I don't know if adding more is going to be that, I mean, it's a very busy road anyway, right? So where Bristol View Drive is not as busy, so I can see looking at that, but it's my opinion.
The issue with Bristol View was only recently, came to be a discussion because of the great number of additional apartments there.
Right.
And I didn't know if maybe Wagner Road is borderline of having the same issues as Bristol View, because, well, that's a large number of new apartments that weren't on that end of Wagner Road either. Something to consider, but it's not a matter of whether or not this is a good idea. Thank you.
All right, Tanil, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda, approval of cost-sharing agreement between Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee for Safe Streets for All grant. Staff report, Jay Dietrich.
Yes, thank you. So in 2022, both Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee jointly applied for a Safe Streets for All grant. The total project cost requested was $200,000, and that will be used with assistance from the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization to develop a comprehensive safety action plan for the region. The development of this plan will allow the two cities to apply for future implementation grants in future cycles. The funding was created as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law and will provide $5 billion in funds over the next five years to the United States. The breakdown of funds for this particular grant, $120,000 is from the Safe Streets for All. The MPO, federal highway funds, will be contributing $40,000, state funds $2,500, and then a total local funds of $37,500. 7,500 of these funds will be from the MPO, and then each city would contribute $15,000 to make up for the rest of it. Bristol, Virginia match has been included in the FY '25 budget, and staff recommends the approval of the cost-sharing agreement.
All right, thank you, Jay. We're looking for a council motion and second.
So move.
Second.
All right, any council discussion?
I think this is great. You know, obviously, the infrastructure law will invest a whole lot of money all across the country, and I think it's important that we get in on those opportunities while we can and get, you know, money for our area. I know there's been work, you know, done like with the sewer system, you know, through that law, and I think if we can upgrade our transportation infrastructure with it as well, I think that's a big deal. And, you know, when you look at the amount of money versus the amount of payment from each locality, it's common sense and it makes sense for us to do it. And of course, already built into the budget, so it's no problem.
And I will say that this planning grant that this would fund is necessary to apply for implementation funds, so you have to have this in place first, and then, so I can identify certain areas, and then you take that to apply for money to actually get things done, basically. And we would hire a consultant, or the MPO would hire a consultant to take care of this plan with help from staff on both sides.
I think it's a great idea. I think anytime we can work with, across that line, with Bristol, Tennessee, and work together on something, and coming together for Safe Streets is a great project, so I'm excited to do this.
What's the focus of the project? I know this is just for planning, but what's the ultimate goal of what they're trying to accomplish?
It's basically to identify areas of, areas in both cities, I guess, until it would be both Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee, to eliminate accidents, to eliminate, you know, to increase safety is the biggest thing. So you would have the planning grants, which has a list of components in its action plan that are required. Some of these components are things like setting goals, a safety analysis of existing roadways, engagement and collaboration with the public and stakeholders, just kind of going through the literature here, and considerations for equity, and then strategy and project selection. But the main focus is on safety, so what this would basically do is identify those things, those areas, those segments of the streets where there are known safety problems, and what can we do to correct them.
Is the focus more on vehicle safety then, or walkability safety?
It covers both. It covers basically everything that's, you know, on the street, sidewalk, pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicle.
It's the type of thing that we need anyway. It's just, I've had an ongoing push for walkability, I was wondering if it could help towards that. But with $200,000 in funding, of which we have to contribute $15,000, that sounds like a good investment to me. We just want to make sure that it's something that we can actually make good use of, and it sounds like it's something that we can make good use of. Thank you.
I just want to thank city staff on both sides for working on this and finding this. This is a great opportunity to, as Councilman Osborne said, that funding is out there, infrastructure funding is out there. We need to jump on that, and this is a great way to do that, so thank you all for your work on this.
All right, with no further discussion, Tanil, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, budget amendment, reduction of $1.5 million. Staff report, Tamara.
Thank you, Mayor Nave. Members of council, this is a budget amendment for a reduction of $1.5 million to the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, to reduce general fund appropriations to restaurant meal taxes and the transfer for locally funded capital projects per council direction at the May 28, 2024 meeting, and to reduce And to reduce local funded capital projects fund appropriations per council direction for police vehicle rotation expenditures in the amount of $530,000. And for fire department expenditures, other equipment, specifically the fire station alerting system, for $220,000. And staff does recommend that council approve this budget amendment as listed.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a council motion and second.
I move the approval of the budget amendment.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
I have a question for whomever. So the reductions in the public safety spending that was budgeted, the $220,000 for the alerting system of the fire department and the $530,000 for the vehicle rotation. Am I correct that we still have those grant requests that we can get in on to pay for those?
Yes, and the intent, hopefully, we'll get that money. And we can add back the $530,000 for the vehicle rotation. And the fire station alerting system has just been moved one year in the capital projects plan from FY '25 to FY '26 it will be.
So for the police cars specifically, then, we have the potential to get that money via other means?
Yes.
Where are we at in that process?
We're still waiting to hear back from that. And it could be several months before we hear back.
Do, does the police department have pressing, pressing needs for rotations?
I don't want to speak for the police chief, but it was my understanding that the fleet is in sustainable shape right now and waiting a few months was not going to be an issue.
Thank you. It's my understanding, hopefully, we're going to hear something, maybe as soon as next month. So we're not looking at putting it off for a long time. We're just looking at delaying it a few months.
Since this is about that subject, did we start doing the police vehicle rotation regularly? Was that five, six years ago or so? I feel like at the beginning, it was like, wow, this is a daunting task because every vehicle is old and we never had a regular rotation. And then it started going in the budget. And now it seems like all of a sudden, years later, it's like, okay, it's improving. There's probably still needs, but it's better than it was.
Yes, and you all will remember in the budget that just ended, we actually secured $477,000 of ARPA monies to help us purchase, recent purchases of police equipment. So our fleet, once again, I don't want to speak for the chief of police, but our fleet is in much better shape as in terms of the age and the mileage of our vehicles than it was five years ago.
You know, Councilman Farnum, I remember when I first got elected, one of the police officers told me that he was starting a chase. And they went up the on-ramp on the interstate and his car died on the interstate as soon as he tried to get up to speed. So, you know, we have come a long way from there. We've certainly come a long way from there. I don't want us to fall back into the habit of not having this yearly rotation, which is one of the reasons I have had concerns with the budget and with this. But, you know, we're in a much, much better place than where we were in 2018, 2019.
I want to thank city staff, Mr. Bradlin, you and your team for finding this fix for us kind of as we threw a wrench in the scheme of things at the 11th hour with our changes. We appreciate that and glad there's a possible workable solution going forward. So thank you.
Just for clarification, we've discussed this, but the public obviously wasn't in those discussions. This shows as being a one and a half million reduction. But technically, that's $750,000 reduced from revenues, $750,000 reduced from spending. So it's, looks like it's being counted twice.
Actually, the fund accounting is not between revenues and expenditures. It's between funds. We're reducing the general fund by $750,000, which includes a transfer to the capital projects fund. So we're reducing that fund as well. So the total fund reduction is the budget amendment, which is $1.5 million. But if all of this had been in one fund, it would have been a $750,000 reduction.
Thank you.
All right. With no further discussion, Tanil, please call the roll. Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, ordinances, first reading. An ordinance to amend sections 30-1, 30-26, 30-27, 30-28, 30-29, 30-51 and 30-52 to add section 30-30 to Article 2 of Chapter 30 to the City Code pertaining to elections.
Mayor and council, we do have Blakely Moore's here tonight and our registrar, in case there are any questions in regards to this ordinance changes. But the Virginia Primary School Precinct, formerly Van Pelt, has approximately 4,500 registered voters. And the general registrar must notify the local governing body if a precinct could exceed a turnout of 4,000 in a presidential election year. Also, the city typically registers between 800 and 1,000 new voters in a presidential election year. Adding a new precinct at the Highlands Fellowship Church off of Bonham Road would allow the city to revise the precinct lines and have two smaller precincts.
Do you have any questions? I think that explained it pretty much, but.
I have a couple of questions just for informational purposes. So obviously, precinct four, Van Pelt, has been the biggest precinct for as long as I can remember. So how many people approximately will be in each precinct when you break it up into five?
We did make a couple of small changes to a couple of other lines as well. One was between the first precinct and the second precinct. The line actually went through the middle of some homes. So we moved it over to the Commonwealth 381 Road. So that's going to change those precincts slightly.
You could have just asked where the bedroom was in the house.
Yeah, that's actually what the code says, yeah, where the master bedroom is. So roughly, precincts one through four will have about 2,800 voters. The new precinct will have about 1,600. So it'll be a little bit smaller. And that's something we can always shift later to, so.
So at least for the majority of them, bring parity. So there's, you know, not one gigantic precinct.
Exactly. And once a precinct gets to the 5,000 mark, it becomes, it's statutorily, you can't have one over 5,000. So we're really getting close to that.
So as far as, obviously, you've got this whole new precinct that you'll have to send notification to, send new cards, all that. You'll also have to notify everyone in precinct four because the name of the voting location changes, right? And then you'll have a few people that moved between precincts, they'll have to notify that. So how many mailings are you all about to do?
Approximately 5,000.
Is it going to be an issue at all even?
No. No, we're hoping, my plan is to get everything out in August, so.
And how many voters, 11,000 total?
No, we're at about 13.
13, so.
Yeah, we've went up a little bit in the last, well, presidential years, usually we register around 800 to 1,000. And then in subsequent years, it kind of trickles down. Then it goes back up again during a presidential year because of interest, so.
So not quite half, but you're mailing out to probably 40% of all the voters. That's a massive undertaking for a two-person office.
Very true.
So essentially, it's the biggest changes on the, if you were looking at a map, the northwestern, northeastern end of the city, everyone around Sonic, Hassan Heights.
Clear Creek.
Mount Vernon, near Home Depot, Clear Creek. Well, essentially, instead of going to Van Pelt, they'll go to Highlands Fellowship.
And one thing we tried to look at too was almost everyone that goes to Van Pelt from those areas pass by there anyway. So it's not really going to be out of their way. And my goal to, this fall, is to station someone outside of both precincts and try to prescreen to make sure people are in the right location. Because as you know, if you send a mailer out, not everyone reads their mail and that type of thing. So we're going to do, you know, social media posts, newspaper, that type of thing, so.
Thank you, Blakely. My question was going to be about the, how are we going to communicate this to the voters? So I think you've covered that. And we'll still have some, but even through all your efforts of communication of, you know, the mailers and social media and every other way, that still might have a little bit of confusion. But I think your plan is good to have somebody kind of screening those so they won't waste their time standing in line, especially this first year where it is a presidential election. We'll have the biggest voter turnout that we usually have in the other years, so. It'll be an interesting year for this change. However, I do think it's for the best. And, you know, the two places are not that far from each other. And like you said, most of us pass the other one going to Van Pelt, so. Yep, just getting the word about.
And if someone would happen to go to the wrong one, it's a quarter of a mile, I guess, to the other one, so it's.
Right. If they're on their lunch, they're still not going to be late getting back. So just running back, yeah. Well, thank you very much for your work on this and also for, in advance, for the work that you're going to be doing to get these notices out. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're looking for a motion and second for the first reading of the ordinance, full or by caption only.
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. Tanil, please call the roll. Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 24-12 and ordinance to amend sections 30-1, 30-26, 30-27, 30-28, 30-29, 30-51 and 30-52 and to add section 30-30 to Article 2 of Chapter 30 to the City Code pertaining to elections.
All right. Next item is ordinances, second reading. An ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 74, appendix pertaining to permit to excavate, fill, bore under or disturb public right-of-way. No one has signed up for public comment. And I'll hand it over to Jake for staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. On June 24, 2014, Chapter 50 appendix was repealed and a new Chapter 50 appendix was enacted to update fees for various permits and other development review items. At the time, there is an existing ordinance from 1998, which was not repealed and is in conflict with the 2014 ordinance. The attached ordinance amends Chapter 74 appendix to be consistent with the 2014 ordinance. The first reading of this ordinance on June 25, 2024 is approved and staff recommends approval on the second reading.
All right. Thank you. We're looking for a motion and a second for the second reading, full or by caption.
I move the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the second reading by caption only. Any discussion? All right. With no discussion, Tanil, please call the roll. Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Reading of ordinance.
Ordinance 24-11, an ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 74, appendix pertaining to permit to excavate, fill, bore, under or disturb public right-of-way.
All right. Thank you. We are looking for a motion and a second for adoption.
I'll move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Tanil, please call the roll. Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
All right. Next item on the agenda, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. And we have one person signed up for that. And that is Brenda Yodis. I ask you to come forward and you have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brenda Yodis. I have a matter of quality of life living in here in Bristol, Virginia. I'd like to start by acknowledging my appreciation for the Bristol Police Department that has tried to support me with difficulty that I'm having where I live. And I'd like to publicly acknowledge my appreciation to Captain Varble, who provided me under FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act, a report of all the calls that I've made since 2022 regarding a neighbor's stereo that is played on his porch and is directed at my house in an attempt to harass me. I read the City Code and from time to time, I have talked with city people about various things in an effort to be in compliance. And Section 38, loud noise, loud unnecessary noise, I understand is no longer enforced in this city. I was just informed of that Friday night when I had made a call and they suggested that I bring that to you. That's a public document and I'm using that information to support my rightful complaint of the noise where I live and own my home. I was told that the police department is not going to buy a sound level meter device and that city council said that they would not put that expense as a priority and has no intention. I've lived here since 2022. My property tax has increased nearly 200% and my quality of life is less than that good sign behind you that says it's a good place to live. So I need you to give consideration to the noise ordinance that you have on your books and reach out to me and we can discuss the matter. And I could help you understand some of the issues that I'm facing with the property that I have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Tanil, please call the roll. Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
And I'm looking for a motion and a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Tanil, please call the roll. Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
And we stand adjourned.